Be ready when it rolls around. It's Tuesday, June the 2nd. Thank you all for coming. It's nice to force to get back somewhat to normal, even though we're still a park like we're supposed to be. The first item on the agenda is consent agenda, which is the minutes of our May the 19th meeting. Everybody had an opportunity to look over those and say motion to approve. Okay, most of our commissioner Lowery, is there a second?
Second.
Second, my commissioner Langston, in discussion, all in favor, I, I oppose, same sign. All right, the first item of business is a proclamation honoring Roger Hall. For those who do not know Roger Hall, Roger's the CEO of Ascension Sacred Heart here on the Gulf, as well as as a Destin Hospital. Roger's been guiding light since we first broke ground. He's retiring. He would, he would be here today, but he's starting to enjoy his retirement. He's red fishing in Louisiana right now. So if you would indulge me, I'll, I'll, I'll read this. Whereas since 2008, Roger Hall has worked to better healthcare in this community. And whereas Roger has represented this hospital within, within the Ascension Sacred Heart system to make sure we receive the resources needed to not only sustain this hospital, but to grow its capabilities and services. Medical care options have expanded since the hospital opened in March 2010. Whereas because of economic conditions in healthcare, there was a time when consideration was giving, given to scaling back the hospital and its services by the Ascension system. But Roger Hall stood up for this hospital and pushed for more, not less. And whereas he set a high standard for Ascension Sacred Heart on the Gulf and provided leadership to achieve those lofty goals. Today, we have some of the highest rankings in the state of Florida and among, among the best in the nation for healthcare and patient safety. And whereas Mr. Hall assembled a medical staff of top quality doctors, nurses, practitioners, technicians, and administrators to provide the best healthcare and level of services for any community of comparable size. And whereas although this community has faced changing times, natural disasters, and extreme economic uncertainty, the mission of this hospital has never wavered. The vision that Roger Hall had for our area has remained focused. And now, therefore, be it resolved that we are so blessed to have the healing ministry of Ascension Sacred Heart and our wonderful medical staff providing, providing care and comfort for our healthcare needs to go from no hospital to what we have today has been an amazing journey. We're truly in a better place thanks to the leadership of Roger Hall. So everybody should be aware of goodness and how blessed we are just to, just to have this hospital here. So this for Roger. Alrighty, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, I don't have anything specifically on the agenda today, but I did want to hit the board and update on two particular subjects. First one being the transfer states. The board asked me to reach out to Jeremy Novak, the county attorney, and discuss with them what their plans, if any, on with that property, see what their intentions were. I had a meeting scheduled with him, it got canceled, and I'm unable to pin him down to get another meeting scheduled, I'm trying.
Okay.
And the board also asked me to reach out to St. Joe. I have done that, but I have not gotten a response.
On their first round of refusal to ask.
Yes, okay. And then code enforcement. As you guys are aware, there's four different pieces of property that we have some problems with, two of them being cleanups, and two of them being tear downs. I met with Richie, we are submitting letters to those folks, letting them know that we are going to be making a move to do whatever we have to do. We're also working on pitch specifications and getting that working together so we don't say it's to tear down.
Thanks, sir.
That's where we stand with us. That's all I have.
All right. Any, any questions for City Attorney, anybody? Okay, under old business, Mr. Jim?
Yes, sir. First item is under the COVID-19 update. We are still following under a state of emergency currently still in place following directions of the governor. At our last meeting, we did open up 95% of our facilities to go back to almost normal working hours. The one item we have not touched is the summer recreation program. We talked briefly about it last meeting, but we wanted to get time to discuss. To my understanding, last Friday, the governor did allow for these type of facilities to be opened up. And today, we're here to consider opening up the Washington Gym Recreation Facility. I believe Ms. Kim Bodine is going to be here today to actually give you an update as what her plans are for the summer recreation program to open it up. And we have currently advertised for the Stackhouse facility as well. So today, we're here to discuss if we want to move forward to open up the two summer recreation programs.
Well, as of today, we've got a second case in Gulf County. And that two weeks from Memorial Day will be next Monday, which is basically the incubation time for, for the virus. And I think around that time, we'll know if we're, if we would save or we're going to have a big uptick and we may have to shut everything down again. So I, I want to open it up, but we have to follow CDC and the state guidelines, which is, are we able to do that? That's my question. Sanitizing after, I'll just give you an example of the Stackhouse. They got full table ping pong table. So every time two kids get through playing, shoot pool, somebody gotta go sanitize the pool sticks or ping pong, sanitize the paddle. You gotta make sure their hands are washed. Make sure none of the kids coming into the facility have a temperature. So there's a lot of moving parts and it's going to be tough today. So that's my two cents worth. There's a whole lot of other things what I think we'll have to do to open it. Under CDC, there, there's guidelines about social interactions at, at youth sports, those type things, and how, how it racks us up. If you have competitive games, let's just say indoors, basketball, it's the high end of extremely likely to spread viruses having a competitive game. Now, the low end, having, having supervised activities, let's just say, working on your free throws or dribbling or those type things. So there's things we, we certainly gonna have to think about in our liability and being socially responsible at the same time for our, for our community. We don't want to start a fire. So I'll open it up. Other commissioners will comment.
I'd, I'd say let's take them one by one. Let's maybe hear from staff on Stackhouse, and then maybe hear from Jim, maybe on Summer Burger. Do you want to do that?
Good.
I feel like we need to see what the plans are, what kind of type of plans that we have. As far as sanitizing and things like that, just look at that and make a decision, right decision, you know, what type of plan we have to place.
Good.
I, I think it's, I look at it in two categories. One, the Stackhouse is the building at the city hall, and it's a city program. So I think we'd have to be more cautious about plans there. But you have to remember, we've been following the guidelines of the governor's, the governor's mission as far as his statement on what we can do and what he concludes. And then the fact that he's come out now and said that these youth programs are open, I, I think, I lean towards allowing the programs to open with the assurance that they will follow the guidelines, much like we did with Stack, the Centennial Building and the other parks. We just have to have an agreement from the L C that they're going to follow the recommendations. And I think as far as the summer program, it would fall in that category, that we move forward with opening the program with the assurance that they're going to follow the guidelines, that keep kids safe or as safe as possible. That's what I want.
Okay. Jim, you want to let us know what your thoughts are, what have you made plans for all the things that we are going to be required to do to be safe?
In reference to the workforce for programs, Kim Bodine had a pretty good plan. I'll let her explain what she's thinking about for her program. As far as the Stackhouse goes, at this point, we have advertised for workers to come in, but initially, the thoughts at the staff level is thinking about, okay, are we going to, are we going to limit the number of kids that we're allowed to come in, how we're going to be able to do the social distancing and clean it up every day? Is it possible to wipe down everything every 30 minutes? Probably not, I can't think of that. But I think it is that we've got to have a cleaning program, and we've got to be able to social distance to the best of our ability. I think at the end of every day, you're going to have to thoroughly wipe down the facility every single day. That's going to be from top to bottom. It probably will take at least an hour if you have five of the pools. That's kind of our thinking with the Stackhouse. We don't know the number of students we're going to have, but normally, an average of 100, 120. They'll get between 50 and 70 kids in the morning sessions, and then 20 to 40 in the afternoon sessions. So we may, we're going to work with our potential staff that we have come aboard to see if we need to spread those hours out, or how we do that for social distancing. That's going to be the harder part. But the cleaning portion, I think is likely to be part of your daily routine.
What about checking temperatures for kids coming in?
Something that we're not, we're not doctors, we're not medical practitioners, but we can definitely see if we can reach out and see if we can get some help from somebody that can do that for us. Maybe to help pharma have some suggestions for, we can definitely reach out and see.
Sarah Heinz said she would work with us, but, but I mean, if she don't provide somebody, most, most places just buy, buy a thermometer, infrared, and shoot it. I mean, they're doing it airports and everywhere else. So we don't have to be medical professionals to take somebody's temperature.
They may be able to tell us what piece of equipment works best. Mayor, you may be able to help us out with that some too, which yesterday, those are the kind of things we've got to think about. Certainly, there's, we can clean the facility, and we can clean the pool sticks in between youths and so forth, but you can't control 50 kids. They're going to be on top of each other, they're going to be playing with each other.
That's, that's my point, I think, my main point, that when you have that many.
They're what we raise.
I want them to, I know they're ready, and I know their parents are ready too, but we're still going to be safe. So Ms. Kim, do you want to, you'd like to help board and give us an idea of what, what you're thinking for Washington Gym area? Please, hear you better.
So I agree with much of what they've said. We've been all over the map trying to figure this out. You know, we understand for the kids, and especially for parents who sometimes count on this for childcare for the summer, who are, that it's a tough issue. There, there's no way to socially distance all kids. I mean, they, they are not going to have to stay six feet apart from each other. And at the facility, we, we couldn't keep them six feet apart. We have 180 kids or more that we serve every summer. Typically, we're able to put 60 kids, and that's just the four to six year olds at the elementary school. So we like to get the littles, we call them the littles, separated from the other children just because they're young, and it's, it's a big mix of kids. Jim Norton has been incredibly supportive. In fact, you guys have been incredibly supportive, the county, the Borage, the health department. We have great partners here, and they all pitch in and hold up what's appropriate. But this year, Jim's schools, all of them are under remodel. They're replacing every light in the schools, they're replacing some of the plumbing, and they'll have inmates at the school, so we can't have kids in the school. So in addition to the kids that we normally have on the campus, and we average about 160 a day, those 60 that used to be somewhere else now have to be back at the gym and the little ones there, which are already tight, even when the littles are at the elementary school. So our options would be to open up, we purchased, we have not yet received a nister that you spray, 24 hour, like something like microban, that's supposed to keep viruses and bacteria away for 24 hours. It's a backpack sprayer, so we can spray down all of the creatures in the gym, which is a big area. We can hand sanitize those kids, we can hire enough people to wipe down every room after they leave a room. But I can't tell you that one of those kids isn't going to catch the virus and not spread it to other kids. They are going to touch one another. They are going to do all the things that kids do when they play. So I can't, I cannot give you 100% guarantee. We can't spread them out six feet. We have probably 25 kids per group. We have three, two paid adults and one intern, usually with each group. So, you know, they're large groups. If, if we could move forward, I would say we'd have to limit camp from either four to 10 year olds or four to 12 year olds, because we just can't handle that many people, whatever facilities we have. We reached out to a couple of churches to see if we could fit the littles there. And I think everybody's just worried about liability, and also just how little kids run around, you know, in a space. And, and I understand that. I mean, I raised kids, my boys were not a dream when they were born, but they happened to some stuff. So if, if you all feel comfortable opening up, we will, we will try to put something together and space as many as we can. We're comfortable with the meals that we serve, that we can put up enough tables to separate kids out, because we can kind of control that environment. But when we get them seated and we're doing activities, you know, kids are going to interact with each other. We bought masks, we bought probably 55 gallons of hand sanitizer. We've done everything we need to sanitize, but, and we've even bought thermometers, which would take some time. And, you know, we have some kids that just walk up to camp. So there, there aren't always parents dropping them off. We, we could send them back home if they had a fever on the floor. But we probably have about 70 kids show up around within 30 minutes. So it would definitely be a process. I think we bought three at the camp. We're, we're prepared to do what we need to do. But if, if you, if you want me to say, there's no way anybody's going to catch a virus, I, I can say that.
No, I think, Kim, of course, appreciate what you guys do, and always running out there. I think for me, we need to have a plan in front of us, what, what you plan to do, as well as the city. We open Stackhouse, there are procedures that have to be followed. And for us, for me, anyway, to say, okay, let's open it up before I know what kind of plan each group has, I just can't do it right now. And I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned that we might be a little bit too early. And I said it several meetings ago, I think, that it just, we may just have skipped it this year. But, but we get good plans in place, and all of employees that are working have been taught those, what to do, and what to look for, then, then I'll be all for it. We need it. Still have to be, be safe, and you're right, kids play, and they're, they're playing right now around the neighborhoods, but not 50 or 70 together in the Stackhouse, or 100 or something in, you know, the Washington Gym area. That's, that's a whole different ballgame.
Well, we can write together a plan and submit protocol to you all. We had kind of circled June 15, but if it needs to be even later than that to make people comfortable, if you see a spike from the beginning time that you started up and think that, that we can certainly create a plan. We, we have funding for that, but from DuPont, and then we use almost matching out our own fund. So I feel comfortable that we can hire enough staff to keep everything as clean as we need to be. I'm not concerned about that. If, if you all want us to take temperatures, we will take temperatures. We have, all of our staff will be wearing masks, but I can put this all together in a protocol for you, so you can look at it and see if you think it's enough. But, you know, it, it probably, there's, there's no way we can do both more at the site without the elementary school, because it's just, you don't have enough spaces to move around in.
I was bringing up the CDC guidelines for, and there are some very good guidelines for, for family childcare programs, summer camps, schools, all of those on the CDC website. And it says what you should be trying to do, I said trying to do. So, so anyway.
It's a big challenge. I mean, it's a challenge. We, we want to do it. What's that time period for? But we'll, we'll put together protocols for it. I think we've just kind of been waiting to see if, if there's going to be an option that we can get.
I think by sometime next week, I think we really can stand flat here for, for doing this. And that will give us time also to have our next meeting, which is, you said the 15th, and our next meeting, 16th. So we could, we could, and it's getting late in the summer. I, I think school may be starting later anyway, from what I'm hearing. Late August, September, that time. So we'd still have a full summer to have.
We take forward with our paperwork to hire everybody to be ready, you know. So we're just kind of waiting for the green light. But we, we'll do what you ask, it's in protocol. You know, we're, and Bay County, we've been seeing customers all along. And it is, it is a lot of work. We've everything sanitized and wiped down, but we're working with adults. So they'll sit at the computer where you tell them to sit, you know. They'll all keep their masks on. This is just a little bit.
Sarah Heinz, this morning, said that she would work with the city on any decision that we made, and help advise us and so forth. So health department's there, willing and able to give us some more guidance if asked for.
Okay. Do you all feel if there's children that have underlying health issues, should we just ask parents to self-attest to that and maybe not someone?
I, I would think that would be the safe prudent thing to do, for sure. Same way about checking temperature. I know a symptom-free child has a, has a toothache or something sometime.
We'll put it together, so you want to.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have, you got anything else on the summer recreation program you need for us to make, to move on?
Yes, at this point in time, what we're doing, we're continuing to move forward with our application process. It closes for the Stackhouse this week. Bodine has indicated that she's working through that process there. Just keep in mind, once, if we do get the green light, it's probably going to take us about 10 days to get the city. We still got to stock, we still got to make arrangements with the staff, which is, what they were.
Okay. All right, next item.
Yes, sir. The next item is in reference to the census 2020. We're still trying to encourage people to get out there and be accounted for. We actually have a phone number, we found out this past week, conspiracy, that people can actually call and do it by phone if they want to, if they don't have a computer. And that number is 844-330-2020. 844-330-2020. You can also go to 2020census.gov. 820 is your phone line, or you can call from a standard phone line to make sure your family and household is accounted for.
Good. And thanks, Tim Crawford, for a nice article last week on the census, I think. Important for us to keep that in front of everyone. So, all right, next item.
Yes, sir. Next item is in reference to the Palm Boulevard Pedestrian Bridge. We went through, as you can notice, we've tore several bridges out that were destroyed after the storm at Buck Griffin Lake. And Palm Beach Pedestrian Bridge was taken out several years ago. Looking at what the cost was for the one that was put back at 16th Street, and looking at the distance there, we've got about $10,000 in the budget, but estimates are that you're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of $35,000 to $40,000 to go back with a similar type bridge that would allow for golf carts. Looking back through the actual bridges themselves, we need to really go back and look at all of our bridges that we currently have. Walk through the, the Walter County, have the pedestrian bridge on Boulevard that were removed. That one needs to be considered. Long Avenue is in bad shape, along with the actual urban around, the actual safety of the area, adjacent to the road, we need to look at that. That one more likely, you probably just go back and some pedestrian bridges, because it's just a little sidewalk if you don't have a golf cart. And you have the two that's been removed at Buck Griffin Lake. All these, we have four right now that we didn't look at. If you take that into consideration, and what the estimated cost of the current one is, 40 times four, you could be in the neighborhood of $150,000, $160,000 for bridges. So we really need to look at all this and figure out, okay, is it a wall, or is it an E, and what type of bridge?
Does a wall on Long Avenue, can it be repaired, or does it need replacing?
I would imagine it probably needs to be replaced. I got a feeling this probably is very similar to the one that was on Palm Boulevard that were removed. I have to look at it and the age, and the, I haven't looked underneath it, but I would imagine that it is, it needs to be replaced. I would.
Well, like Commissioner Hoffman said earlier, we might want to just, we know what we need, we may want to prioritize, and see, you know, what, what we think, utilize the most, and open there. And we, we've got insurance money on some of them, too.
On the Buck Griffin Lake, you do have insurance money. I don't have the final number on that. No, I'm sorry, we didn't get insurance on Buck Griffin Lake bridges. We only got FEMA dollars on the bridges at Buck Griffin Lake. That was $88,000, but we did expend some of that money on, on the one bridge that we put back. So I'll have to do a summary of what we have, along with the summary of inventory of the bridges. But if you have to tell us which ones you would like to be replaced, and what type of bridge you want, it can be as simple as just going out and bid for these things when they come in. You can decide, okay, based on this price, if this is the one we want to put back in place. We need, we need some help from y'all to find this, some guidance as to what we want.
I'd like to go out and bid on all of them. Get information on all of them, something we may can do now, something we might not be able to do at all. But I, I think there is a, a need and a wish for the middle bridge at Buck Griffins to be replaced.
Not the one parallel or 20th Rock, the parallel.
It may be the middle one. Then, there's a little more to the one along 20th Street, I think. But I, I think, I've had several people say, if we can get a bridge replaced, let's do the middle one. It opens up a little bit more of the area. Because you still can walk on the side of 20th Street, you had to, till we could make a decision on that. But you can't cross what's there now, so.
You have the DIS golf course, that, that would help access the DIS golf course.
Mr. Hoffman, would you want pedestrian bridge there, or something that would hold a motorized vehicle there?
I would say we just need a bicycle and a pedestrian. There's no need for a golf cart being in the middle of that. That's just my opinion.
No, again, it's not allowed now on the walking path, so.
I agree with, let's, let's split them all out on this side, whether you want to go with.
You want to bid out the long one, parallel to 20th?
I think the more. I think the more information we have, the the better decision we'll make because we may find out one is extremely expensive and it may take two years to to be afforded.
Now, the one on Twentieth Street, we have to get the option of having it close to the road and smaller that just goes from bank to bank with a garble on the side instead of the correct people. I have something that I'm always moving very expensive. So we could make that one a pedestrian on that side or the smaller bridge that you already have pretty much a foundation, I think, on the side of the bank on that.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation.
If it's small and you still have, you'd have to enlarge the footprint of your actual concrete sidewalk, but I think you can tie back in but you wouldn't need a garble that.
Yeah, yeah, I looked at the other day myself. One side of it, you have the foundation of where that corner comes out. And then the other side, it would be pretty much the same project we had at Sixteenth Street.
That would be our recommendation if that's what you wanted to do that one in that aspect. So we've got two pedestrians. It sounds like Booker and Mike wanted to reduce size. Recommendation, one on one on Long Avenue, I would keep that one for the two and replace it in the same size.
In the sidewalk.
And it sounds like we were trying to do a golf cart crossing down the street on on the park. That would be if you were to put one there, it would be a nice safe route for golf carts through town. It's not a heavily trafficked area.
Sounds good.
So what I have for us to go out and bid for is four bridges, three pedestrian, one golf Palm Boulevard. See what we get.
Yeah.
What about the one down in Core Park?
That is actually part of the trails grant and we're actually looking to put a few pipe in there. That way we can actually probably do some kind of new or asphalt process and get things in.
Oh, Kentucky. Let's move on to new business.
Uh, first item is playground equipment donation. We have a equipment donation released for today uh, from the Methodist Church, Methodist Church. Uh, we had substantial damage after Hurricane Michael. My understanding they are actually going to be get some help from FEMA, but the old playground equipment that was only in place a couple of years, uh, would need to be removed. Take a look at this. Very, very nice piece of equipment and we lost our piece of equipment at the Stackhouse, so we have a donation here this week. We would like for the board to give us permission to get this donation and relocate it to the Stackhouse where we lost our piece of equipment. It's free, John.
We need it and it's good condition. Let's see. I'd say that's good. That's my sub.
It's a very generous donation to the church. They have various pieces of equipment.
I'm grateful. I have. I'll make a motion. Commissioner Lyer made a motion to accept a donation from the Methodist Church for playground equipment. Second. Second, by Commissioner Langston. Any further discussion? All favor I. I oppose. Same sign motion. Passes four of.
Uh, the last item I have on today is in reference to the golf course work for Ford. Kind of parallels with the summer recreation programs and the daily rental facility. The incubator building is referred to as where they utilize the computer room and actually help job placement in day-to-day operations. Uh, staff recommendation is to extend the lease for another year for the incubator building in there. But that would be her standard location.
And it's there's basically really no change whatsoever.
That is the same. One came. All we did was change the year.
All right. Their motion to approve. You need one time or we do both at the same time?
You can do both of them. The only caveat with the Washington Gem is we don't know if these wood banks are going to be opened up on there, but staff recommendations to go ahead and have that prepared for them for that summer recreation program so they if they want to sign it and.
Okay, so entertain a motion to accept the lease improvements and or incubator building in Washington Gem. Motion. Second, Commissioner Langston. Any further discussion? All favor I. I. At the same time, let's pass four of.
That's all I had.
Okay, Mr. Grantman, you've got something on the agenda?
Well, yes, we put this item back on the agenda for consideration. This was brought up about six months ago and it says, uh, the board considered you know, the stumps right over in Hurricane Michael. You know, we we held off back and remember based on, you know, the possibility of good.
It needs to come to the floor so we can. Thank you.
Anyway, Mayor, the item on the agenda is the stump. We talked about this in the last year. As it relates to the stumps, we are a part of the system. We elected them not to make a purchase and they're proud to capture some of the later QLN. That's doing the QLN. So we just formally put it back on there. This is something the board's interested in. You know, it's there. There's another option as well. Potentially be contracting the stump grinder now with various companies. So it's just for your guys' consideration. It's there. We just felt like we'd bring it back up since we haven't had any action.
My only concern, John, is taking staff away from you to operate something that we've we've got plenty for you to do without adding something. And the other part of it is a maintenance issue. And the third part of it is we got all the stumps taken care of. We got a stump grinder sitting there that's not being used. I'd almost rather identify the areas that that need it, go out and bid and see what.
And we can certainly do that and run across lag, you know, based on areas that the board wants to follow times an area or if you want the staff to do that.
And 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 once we do that, if we might say, well, it's a whole lot cheaper to buy a stump grinder than it is contracted out.
Or or maybe keep it away.
Yeah, we we don't know that, but that's just my two cents for us. I'd like to hear from other board members.
What's your preference? Buy the grinder and have the extra work or?
Right now, I'd like to go out and see what someone might be willing to charge us to do that, to be honest.
I'm good with that.
Mr. Mayor brought up, you know, we're kind of a tax of kids.
I think you can grind a lot of stumps for nine to seven hundred dollars.
John, how many stumps are you looking at?
That's a bar. That bar's a big area. Florida forever property along the highways and other big crossings down there. Why don't, John, why don't you list some areas and get us an idea about how many in each area? And then maybe we can just do like the bridges. We can go out and bid or we might bid bid everything. We might get a better deal if we just bid all and get it over with. Yeah, and that end of and in our bid, we certainly want to say they clean up. I mean, they're not fully piled. Chips piled up everywhere. They'll have to clean it off, but once we identify the areas we we like to bid for. Let's try that. Y'all good? Good on that guy?
Yeah, I'd also figure out what manpower it's going to cost this super guy to run it. Because I've seen you one guy.
That's one guy less. Unless we hire somebody as stump grinder expert. All right, John. You got anything else? Anybody? You have, John? Okay. All righty. Uh, Mr. Larry, I see you back there in the corner. Glad to see you again.
Thanks, sir. Yes, Mayor, this was a record. The city board sees the pass pass the second quarter of this state by project. Uh, we did see a real reduction in our numbers this time, and we want to attribute that to the new ground storage bank areas. It's been making work very well.
Right.
One of the item, uh, DP is going to be on site tomorrow. They're going to be conducting the three-year sanitary survey inspection. So they'll be here with us. And just to let you know, there's been a lot of turnover with DP. I don't know if you're aware. Like Mr. John Pogge is retired and several of the old guards are gone now. So we got some new people coming in. We're going to have to develop a relationship with them.
Yeah. That's right. And there are one night inspections.
We are hoping to pick this one day.
Anybody got any questions? Larry, more? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Kevin, all these people back in line.
Uh, just quickly, we're same place we were last month. We've got right four foot room. We're going to take off June of this fall. Um, every month we take off same display. Bring some push little plant you don't have. Rain will come soon enough, you know, and we'll have the hours. Maintenance on equipment is kind of what we're going to do. Maintenance on the video.
I mentioned renovation you started on some building.
We've got the the lab, you know, we took one of the old roads to convert into a lab. So that is, we've got the interior done. Got some trim work and then air conditioned and then the lab's functioning. So that's, we're almost done there. When it comes to the maintenance building, which we lost. Uh, we still have to cut the door. We're out for hopefully, you know, we get a vehicle, a contractor coming in and cut us the door inside that building. Has a shock. That's kind of what we're missing. So we're kind of half done as as far as what we've gotten accomplished. And really, we've been losing one guy. We've got one guy, a career source that's been doing the bulk of the work as far as labs. Every day he goes in and just stays in the building.
What about mowing spray field? Is that one? Okay, all your equipment good and getting it done?
Yes, we're, um, Jay's out there now. Dad, he's out there now. You still got to cut and get a field, whether it's sprayed or not. It's just overall. It's just the anything, you know. Pretty much one guy all summer. It's kind of what he does.
Good deal. Anybody else, Kevin? Anybody got any questions, Kevin? I can hear about it. Okay, Mr. Mike.
Uh, I'd like to follow up on on two issues. So first of all, on the playground equipment, we do have thirty thousand dollars in insurance money. So if we're getting a playground, we could reallocate that thirty thousand dollars towards the bridges. We do need to solve the issue of ownership of the the land there at the compactor and EWS garage. We need to sort that out because FEMA needs to be told what the situation is there with the ownership of that property. We do need to sort that issue out so we can lay that on the FEMA because that may impact our recovery of funds and public income on that particular project.
Have we already got money from FEMA board or just?
We've gotten the insurance money. We've not gotten the FEMA money. There's about five projects for FEMA that have not been finalized. That's one of them. Uh, the others are the pavilion and Frank Bay Park, uh, the wastewater treatment plant, uh, the Maddox House, Clifford Sims Park, the main projects that haven't been finalized. So so we need to sort out where we're going with Frank Bay Park and Pavilion. We're out for bid now on the Pavilion. Uh, and so we'll have to make a decision. Hopefully, we have two hundred eighty nine thousand dollars combined between insurance and FEMA for the Pavilion, and we'll have to make a decision whether we'll replace that one way or the other so we can move forward with FEMA on that.
Yeah, we can bid that out separate, isn't that correct?
Right.
Or move and.
Okay, so when that comes back, we'll be able to make a better informed decision. The Maddox Park property, pretty clear, we're not going to rebuild the Maddox House. So we'll have some flexibility with those funds. It's a total between insurance and FEMA of three hundred and forty thousand dollars for Maddox House and that bathroom. Uh, so what we'll need to do is come up with a plan for what we're going to build in that space. Uh, and get that approved from FEMA so that we can then use those funds for the redesign, basically, of Maddox Park. Back to normal accounting, we haven't gotten our audited financial statements yet. We hope to get those here in the next few weeks and finally close two thousand nineteen. Other than that, I don't have anything. Oh, the the NRCS grant, Chicken House branch grant, has not been submitted to them yet. Uh, and once I do submit it to them, they'll turn around and and provide us back with a final document for review and and then we'll be able to make a decision. So I would think thirty to forty-five days we'll have a document from them, which will allow us to make a decision if we want to move forward with that grant for Chicken House branch. FEMA is pushing us to get that done because they want to discontinue it in FEMA. We're going to go with NRCS. We can discontinue the process at FEMA for cleaning out our ditches. So it's on me to get that NRCS grant and and I'll task myself to get that done this week. Other than that, I don't have anything. If somebody has a question.
And the FEMA money that's at state level right now, that I know it's been a holdup, but we got any track?
Yes, I talked to them this morning and FEMA has released the money to the state. The state has the money. And because it's over a hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, it's a large project and they scrutinize it. So they're they're going through all the payroll and he's sending me back payroll timesheet that wasn't signed by supervisor or or there was a two-hour discrepancy. So they're they're combing through the payroll time fairly significantly. So I talked to him this morning. I answered a few of the questions. He seems to think that he's got it and told me this a month ago, that it would be two weeks and release it. But that's only the payroll side of it. Then he's going to go in and review the larger piece of it, which was our equipment. Once he's certified the time, he can then validate the time that I posted on all of our equipment used, all the trucks and vehicles used for ten days after the storm. The total amounts to four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So I I'm working him and it's the state PA that's holding it up. It's not FEMA.
Well, no sound like you're working on it when, you know, someone.
And I'm sure he's got twenty different projects he's doing and he's juggling them all and I assume that's the base put on it. But but I am moving on it. You know, we that's going to be gravy money. Obviously, we've already spent that money. So that'll be four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars we can put straight in our coffers to do this. So I'm working it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mike, any question?
I got one question. What is the holdup on Clifford Sims Park of FEMA?
The 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 problem with Clifford Sims Park is is that they've not generated what I feel is valid replacement costs. For instance, they didn't, they didn't include the the cost for the two two vision piers. You know, and and they under calculated the cost to redo the sidewalks and the pavement. So I've been going back and forth with them, trying to get them to come up with a real number. I mean, the numbers they have are ridiculous low. I think they're at anyway, that's that's the problem. So so I think John and I have discussed the idea of of going with aluminum bridge and and developing a plan for that. I think if we could could go out for bid and cost those, that maybe that would give them something substantial that they could then provide us with the funding for that. I guess that's the task we need to go is to get John and I to work together and come up with a plan to get the engineering done or the design of our two vision piers under aluminum cast like we did the bridge by River Martin. So I think that's the problem there.
I just want to make sure that it's not being held up because of something the city has failed to do. If we need to get bids on the bridge, then that we need to get.
Yeah, I think that I think in hindsight, that would have been the way we should have gone out and gone out. Got engineering to do the plans for everything and bid everything in hindsight, but 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 yes, I think that's the priority. I think I'll get with John and try to take that.
I know we talked about that in the last meeting.
Well, we talked about. Yeah, we need, we decided to just do one bridge, but I mean, for for his purposes, we need to bid out both of them.
Right. Right.
Yes, sir, you are correct. We did have a discussion last meeting, Mr. Grant, I did, we had some takeoffs on our late, I'll send it to you in a second, but, but basically, we started looking at these takeoffs, and I believe it's on the grid infrastructure, which has been, which have already done, but the walking bridge.
You know, we, we chose one structure as the board recommended last week. And we sort of wired in with, as you probably expressed, we were looking at the ocean, and very close to that. It was on a hundred percent. Just for the structure, well, that included the, well, that was just for the structure. We had another, I think about sixty-six hundred in geowork if needed and thirty-eight hundred in structure, but we had to add a pile of each other as well. So, you know, we very usually could be on that structure at one eighty, one ninety pitch. And then we started looking at piles ourselves. We're not engineers, but thinking of how those piles are put in there, when they think we put in there fifty years, that really, that can be very tricky. I think we could be in the two hundred thousand dollar neighborhood, because we have started looking at things really, really hard last week, but I think we've got a.
We wrapped it up actual number, so, yeah.
We keep looking at bids, we're pretty close, we need to sit down and sit down with our city engineer a couple of questions, but we can put some big stakes together, but it's not.
And I'll take that information that John has and push that out to FEMA and see if we can have a better understanding of the best way to move forward for the next.
Okay, we got Mr. City Engineer, Mr. Josh Backsley is here in person, and welcome in person, Josh, his second meeting. Glad, glad to have you with us.
Glad to be here. Going through the list, first item is the NRDA grant update, and that's the Forest Park Stormwater Improvements and the Stormwater Master Plan. The Forest Park, we have the draft comment ready, they'll be reviewed this week, and I expect we submit those Northwest Florida one magic this next week. My understanding is once they review that and that one, it's up to have the second hearing, where then we'll be able to make a decision on our final plan. We have the, the calculations and the cost estimates prepared as well, so we'll have that to follow up with comments. The Stormwater Master Plan, which is the other grant, we're actually doing field work at this point, we're cataloging former pitches and working on a master inventory for the city's infrastructure, so we should have something put together soon that we can further review again. The, or the DEP walking path, a support city trail. I worked with Kelly this past week to draft a response letter to DEP and to organize timelines, request a one-year extension. We had a conversation with them last week, and they're favorable to grant a one-year extension for us to complete that, so we built a timeline, and they're expecting a response this week for approval of a one-year extension. And I think that'll put us through November of twenty twenty-three to complete construction. CBT grant update, we actually have the plans for, ready for internal review right now. We're looking at them this week. The advertisement is prepared, and I think that advertisement is set to run and the bids are due on July fifth. So that's now a slip line, CIPP jobs, the plans are prepared. And then last but not least, it's Long Avenue Sewer and First Street destination. We received comments from DEP yesterday for our submission, they were very, very minimal, which is, is good news. We expect to have that response prepared and submitted by the person next week. I'll have some personal conversations with DEP, but I fully expect them, unless they add more comments to that, to receive a permit within the next week or two, which will put us ahead of the end of June, end of June SRF deadline. Our deliverables on that SRF deadline with permits and plans approved. So we receive our permit, that takes care of that, and they also require a facility planned in project period two, which has already been submitted to SRF. So assuming we receive a permit within the next week or week and a half, we should be ahead of that deadline.
We're ahead of the game.
I think that covers all items. Let someone ask a question.
I've, I've got not a question, but, but a request, and I'll throw it out to the board. We, we got a grant a year or so ago to do the engineer work for downtown water, and it's engineered, ready to go. I would, I talked to Jim this week, I would like to see us, since this is not packaged in with the Long Avenue SRF request, I'd like to see if we want to task Duberry into, and eliminate that, get Josh and John to work together on the sewer part of the downtown project, and package those together and send them in to Triumph. Triumph right now is a little more favorable to infrastructure projects that tie into economic belt. And I mean, we can't move forward on antiquated sewer and water system downtown with what's going to come. St. Joe Project is one that's, that's going to be big. All of the area around St. Daniel Bank, Audi Air, that's, that's building up somewhat. We're gonna be, be in trouble, we're gonna go in and try to get ahead of curve. And so I'd, I'd like to see us at least get Josh and John to start brainstorming a little bit, maybe come back at our next meeting and put some kind of proposal out there, what, what it costs to go ahead and get, get it bundled and ready to go, submit it to Triumph and say yes or no.
Would you support the idea of taking it a little further, naturally compensing all the way down to MLK project?
Absolutely.
One time we could talk about a Triumph grant, maybe, and, and reaching out to somebody that would cover the infrastructure through the MLK corridor, maybe we could go from one side all the way to the other.
I would, I would just ask them to look into all that, bring, bring something back to us, you know, just kind of digest version of what, what we may be looking at. Triumph's got some money, and, and even though it's difficult sometimes to get things funded through them, I, I think they're a little more favorable right now to, to do some infrastructure. It's not just totally tied, I mean, jobs are really gonna create, maybe it'll help us keep jobs, sure, and it'll help us in the future possibly get as, as we grow. You guys are okay with that, just answer it and do it. Right now, it's just, it's gonna be Josh and John's time, and then they can come up with something to call further, some kind of cost for engineering.
We can, we can go back and approve all the work we've already done, you know, and see if they have that intensive request, just to show.
Any questions? Any questions? Josh, anything? Thank you, sir. Glad to have you with us.
Mr. Mayor, the NRD grant was spoken on, can I speak on now, wait to the view?
Let's just, let's, let us get to the agenda, then we'll get out of here.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, code enforcement, Jim, we got anything on that that, that didn't come up with?
That's right. The city attorney indicated, we've met today, we're moving on the four cases. In code enforcement, we have two code enforcement officers working for the city now, and they're continuing to work through, and they'll be bringing new cases as well if you just fish them out. So continue to work hard for it.
Very good. All right, police department. Basically, you've got some force.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing on the agenda, just wanted to update the board on the reconstruction of the police department. A mandatory, a preview meeting on Friday, May twenty-second. There was ten attendees representing seven different construction companies.
That's great.
Right, the bid process, of course, it closes on Friday, June twelfth.
That's, that's, that's a good, that's, that's good for us, because that made a little more competition to get the job if there are seven guys versus two or three. So I'm happy with that. That's great. Did they have any, any questions for the police department? All right, thank you, sir.
Mayor, I'd add that we, we have finalized the FEMA on that, and with the insurance of FEMA, last the expenses here today, we do have a hundred and twenty-five thousand available for City Hall Police Department.
Okay, all right. Okay, city clerk, Ms. Pierce, you got anything?
I do not have anything, unless someone has some questions.
Anybody question, Ms. Pierce? All right.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Grant, citizens to be heard. Come on up.
Welcome, Grant, fortunately, I can do it, hope everybody's doing well. The NRD grant has been brought up, the last, actually, this will be the fourth meeting has been brought up, and the last time that I could discuss the work, the workshop, December of two thousand nineteen, there was no plan, there was no back plan for this workshop. Now, y'all, a couple of months ago, three plans have been submitted from Northwest Florida back to y'all, the engineer Duberry, which is what I have here looking at. Could I, could I take a minute to just go and ask a couple of questions about your plans? Your plans?
Just one second. Josh, you mind coming up? He won't have to turn it back to us, we know.
Josh, how you doing? Number one plan is showing the Stormwater Canal, which is between Tenth and Sixteenth, running into a two and a half acre retention pond at Sixteenth Street with an overflow weir. That's option one. Option two being the same retention pond with two, it looks like two, four more canal cut into a snake around. And option three being a baffle box, only a baffle box at Sixteenth Street. Could you explain to me, so this is the three options that they've, it's pretty much adamant that we, we're looking at now?
I don't, I don't think so. I'll, I'll answer that if I can. Those are pretty good.
Yeah, really. But this, just to clarify, that is just, just an enhanced wetland. That is, that's not a beach, that's just showing an option with a pond and a wetland enhancement for that. That's just for clarity.
Okay, wetland, so this, this is, so what's the difference in one and two? A wetland is enhanced?
So you would just be having plantings there, just an enhancement?
Just planting, that's not, that's, okay, leaving the canal open.
Correct.
Okay, that, that, that was, that was.
And, and too, Robert, we, we, we looked at those three plans, and we all said, we can choose one of the plans, or we can have a combination of all three, once we workshop it and decide, you know, what we want to move forward with, with management.
That's correct, correct.
Yeah, and so, so everything's still a little, quite a bit fluid, in my opinion.
But, but, but to ask, and, and not jumping ahead or back, of the last statement made that he, actually Duberry is getting this grant, right? Duberry getting this grant, I mean, this is, is coming through them to Northwest Florida DEP.
Well, it's coming to us, it's coming to the city. And they're our, they're our engineer, and that's.
You're correct, they, and they are working on, and have been working on it in December. Correct. To get, come up with this plan so they, we, we actually will have a plan.
Yes, sir.
And my question is, this, is it gonna be one, one of these three, or we, we still don't, we still don't know?
Well, and I think that that's, we're preparing the responses to DEP. The purpose of that second public hearing is to put these options back out here, discuss the responses to the city, and then to move forward towards a decision. So no decision has been made. It could be a combination of those three, it could be one, but I don't think we're that far in the process, if I'm answering correctly.
The second meeting workshop with, with, with Northwest Florida, I think we'll start narrowing our focus at that time, but right now, I think that's my focus.
I'm just wondering why everybody's been looking at these, that, that's the question, everybody's been looking at these three plans since they were put on the, I mean, if, anything looks good on paper, and you don't play them. But, oh, the, the, my, my last question is, I guess would be a statement, would the number one priority of this grant is what? The number one priority for this grant?
For, for water quality for St. Joe?
What is the number two, what, what is the number two?
I don't know.
Would it, would it be flood protection, maybe? That's Stormwater, Stormwater. The number, the number one, the, the first priority would be Stormwater to clean up the bay, our, our beautiful bay. We can agree on that, right?
Yeah.
Number two being flood protection for our community.
I would, I would think so.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
You have to take both plans into consideration when you start talking about protect, flood protection, and that's where I spoke a minute ago about us cataloging all of the city's drainage system. You have to tie that project into this one to combine to have both water quality and protection for the city. Of course, that pond would, but you have to have both projects to satisfy them.
And, and, and I, and I spoke on this, actually, I've got, I like to share some business you have at the meeting for what the hurricane, what we had in this same area we're discussing, what we had there, and what is it gonna be? Like I say, anything looks good on paper. The next storm we have, what, when you put a baffle box on the other end or a retention pond, you creating holdup, you creating back pressure. Right now, it's straight out into Patton Bayou, and you say you want to play it, and that, that's my concern. Now, for y'all to be ready, and us at the same time be ready, because I'm, I'm trying to look out for, for our flood, what, what we have now, it, 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 everyone who designed that seventy years ago, y'all need, y'all need to look, fire it back. Okay, and that's, and that's why I, I'm, I'm just, and these, these three plans, you know, I've.
We'll discuss those further down the road.
Oh, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, thank you for that. Thank you, Josh. All right.
Thank you, Mayor Christie McElroy, Woodward Avenue. I'm glad we're back all together, and I hope that we'll be able to have this meeting with Northwest Florida. It's just really important to call it out, because it makes it sound like this meeting is for Northwest Florida. It's for the public. That's who it's for. And so we gave a lot of fault to what the input that we gave at the first meeting. I would encourage our new city engineer to kind of look back at the, that document and the history of that, or should be attached. As Mr. Grant, Mr. Grant said, you know, drainage has been a big problem. I'm a little curious, when you talk about the, the walking path, a DOT grant update, and we have a walking path, but what is, what is the purpose of this grant for the walking path?
Wow, Commissioner Lowry, can you?
I know, I know lighting's part of it.
Okay, so the lighting, which is through Duke Energy, is going to go with that.
Yeah, we're stuck with a, an easement issue, an easement issue with, with something, who's that doing?
Who's that doing?
Okay. The only reason I ask is because, again, the way that bike and walking path was built, and the way it was built up, and there was not proper drainage put around that, it continues to, when we get rain, flood people's yards. So whatever is available, we need to think about the mitigation of what has already gone on, because you build up asphalt higher than people's yards, and you just put a hill and go on one side or the other without there being any drainage. So I, I would be interested, and let's continue to press on that a bit. And then the last thing, Mr. Mayor, is about the capital improvement plan? Okay, that y'all went over, yeah.
Go up a little, sorry.
Yeah, exactly. It, it's a very comprehensive plan, but when. Yeah, exactly. It, it's a very comprehensive, uh, plan. But one thing I didn't see in there was about the field of drains.
I'm not sure it was in there. It's five-year plan, so, um, you know, I don't see it either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I, I mean, we've got that property, it's been cleaned up, it's been gated up, et cetera. Uh, that really should be in the capital improvement plan.
I don't have a problem. I've, you know, I've been an advocate for field drains for a long time, so I, I just, uh, that's oversight, I guess, on my part.
Well, yeah.
But it can be amended if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Anderson, the CIP plan can be, uh, can be amended.
It can be amended anytime soon.
We can look at adding it to it.
Thank you.
If you can bring that up next meeting, just put it on the agenda, amend the CIP plan and see what rest of these folks would like, like to see.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure seeing you.
Welcome back to everybody. Sure. All right, discussing our women, giving our important citizens, hear about them.
Hi. Good to be back too.
Yeah.
Yes. What's there, but I just wanted to just bring up a few things that we discussed, uh, and I'm looking for some answers. Number one is Peter Clark. I know a while back we talked about vehicles being parked back there, uh, behind the gym and on the track field. But it, cars are still able to get back there. Some posts are missing and they drive through those, at those posts. Can we get some more posts up there to prevent the vehicle from going back there?
You know what I'm talking about.
I'll be ready.
Okay.
I talked to John, I, I, yeah, Commissioner Langs and I actually just got back three weeks before this meeting and, uh, we did most of the cables taken up and we've had to repair that cable six times. Self-policing may also well. Right, and that's, that's, that's why I wanted to come here before I started that because I go back there, area, no, it's somebody can relax and I see cars back here. And I saw, I saw taking pictures and ran it to, to the police department, said, okay, here's, here's the evidence. But I wanted to see, can we prepare that before I start taking pictures? And I actually saw me taking, oh, somehow they get hit back there. Are some accident going to happen back there with the cars?
What, what are the cars doing? I mean, are they occupied or just parked in the area and used the gym?
They, they occupied.
Oh, they're occupied?
They occupied.
Okay.
And what's going on inside of? I don't know because I, I, I can't say what's wrong, but they occupied. Okay. Uh, the next thing, uh, I, I got a question that he also, I was surprised when I, I learned recently that the, the African-American officer that we had on the force, what happened? Did he resign or was he dismissed? If he was dismissed, uh, what was the reason behind it?
Well, she's not here. I don't know Jim or Jim or Detective Bidley. Are you prepared to answer that question?
Uh, basically, I keep my backyard probation that I would like to defer. Okay, okay. All right, and, uh, the, the next thing is, uh, she's, I think she have already left, a young lady that came up with, talking with about the summer program. You said she addressed, uh, uh, some, some support from the churches to help with the program. And I'm try, I'm, I'm thinking, I have not seen anything from, from the North Port St. Joe Men's Alliance ask for support.
I think, uh, what, my, my basic understanding of what she was saying was that maybe she had reached out from churches for space for those young kids that were separated, but I, that's my, but.
Yeah. My, my question was, who does she reach out to? Because she did not reach out to.
You'll have to ask her.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, that's why I wish she was here and I, and I, it wasn't open up for me to ask her why she was here. I, I wanted to.
Probably spoke the long avenue because they have a gym, you know, a church that would be big enough and has like a playground or a big gym for a hundred plus kid, which is the way I took it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Run daycare currently or something.
Uh, Houston. Uh, uh, okay, because, uh, we, the little street over there, uh, we may have one or two churches over there that, that can support that. And we would love to, I would love to, uh, to trust, accommodate her in, in whatever way we can over there and up to, to, to church. Okay. So, so those were some of the things that I just had in mind. And then Chester, we, he brought up, uh, during our early meeting, you know, about John Henry. So Chester, you want to address, uh, because we never answered this question, I don't, I don't think. Did we?
No. Actually, I, I can just not hold anyone up. One, because we had the CRAP now without that, Stephanie and all that. Uh, is that I said I'm here to understand if we're gonna go forward with John Henry's request or not. That's all I think we didn't discuss.
Yeah, well, no, from my understanding, the budget's done for, uh, the downtown redevelopment. Any money after that's gonna have to come through the city, across other requests that I can make for the city commissioner in the, in that year budget.
So do I need to have, uh, another application come through the city based upon that request?
I think, but, but, Mr. Mayor, I think based on our last meeting or maybe in our last DRA meeting that we talked about was maybe doing, you guys putting together, um, the match money that you received from the different foundations and such in, in that request, if I'm remembering correctly.
I remember we discussed, uh, asking for like a timeline. I remember Commissioner Ashbrook had requested some kind of time.
Well, I'll, I'll follow up with that since you had a question. I had a, a conference call. Chester asked me to attend a conference call with Jim and John Henry and also on that was Danny Bowden was on there and trying to explain what, what money's gonna be useful when we need John Henry. And, and John himself said that it's not for any kind of planning. He was wanting to be a consultant to oversee the Spam U University of Florida grants that were coming in for that improvement. Now, I may have misunderstood, Jim, I mean, you, uh, and so that, that's my understanding. He said that it was to be, to be a consultant with all the overlays and all that had been done.
Okay, got something.
So, so, but kept talking about the two grants from the two universities. So that was my understanding.
What's, I, I just need to know what we need to go forward with, except because the application is based upon him, he has to be a consultant because he's been there since day one. And we haven't had a consultant that deals directly with North Port St. Joe redevelopment. We have, no, we had a consultant for downtown redevelopment, but we haven't had one other than John for what we were trying to improve on North Port St. Joe's side.
Well, uh, Jim, uh, and Anderson asked Danny Bowden if, if any of these grants had, uh, line items for administrators, consultants, and the question was another guy. And so, anyway.
I just like.
So I guess about bottom line to answer your question is, you need to request, I think, and y'all chiming in, I think you need to request the city fund John Henry's, whatever he's gonna be.
Well, that was what the application or the implication was about, simply because we knew that, that the condo was gonna be a part of that to the city and we was actually part of that for that redevelopment for North Port St. Joe.
Right.
Uh, we, we know that we made some major improvements and about what we're getting ready to do. And not to slap anybody in the back or in the face or whatever, but we realize that the initial funds that we received to do the plan, that, that has been gone. So forty thousand or fifty thousand dollars will not be able to build, but we do have funds getting ready to come in that's gonna help us start to what development, even the infrastructure for modern development. So, you know, we definitely need somebody that's, uh, that's gonna be a good consultant for us. And my, but John also is a developer. So, you know, we get two in one. And that was hoping that the, at doing our CRI meeting, that we discuss exactly what we might do with that application or do I need to resubmit it to the city?
Jim, you have a comment on that?
I think there's a couple things I have to think about is, my intention with this is going to be for administrative things on that. Uh, we currently do have a consultant that we do have on retainer, uh, Mr. Ray Greer that actually helped with planning. You have the first stages of the, uh, the plan in place for it, okay, you still gotta do the overlay and district. So that's still, that is still hanging out. So at some point, we, we are, we are likely to do a task order with Mr. Greer to do that overlay district on there, depending on exactly how we want to step down of the actual zone for the project. Now, the administrative side of it, that's a little trick here. You know, is that a situation where we're gonna have to go out and bid to find this separate consultant on there because everybody else we have, we went out and bid for and we have them on retainer sheet? Four hundred and eight thousand dollars, that comes into play next fiscal year. I did have a conversation with Mr. Kennedy this past week. Give me a list of all the items that he's working for currently in the PSGRA plan because he needs to get with me and Mr. McCord to put it before you because we're starting our budget process. So I think all this stuff is gonna taper in, getting into your planning for your next fiscal year and making decisions as to exactly what you want to use that four hundred and eight thousand dollars for. Right now, we don't have any additional money in the budget this fiscal year in the city side either for this type of consulting or planning on it. Uh, we do have a little bit of money left to decide that we paid Mr. Greer out of for professional services, but that's what we're running the city side.
And Scott, you, uh, you have, you wanna raise what, uh, four hundred and eight thousand is, is not even coming into the city coffers for January 1st.
Right.
So, so we, we were kind of, some of us thinking it's gonna come in our budget during our October, December timeframe, but, so, so we won't even have any until January, it won't, you know, won't have any to spend for that.
We understand that. But like I said, the application was based upon the fact that in two thousand sixteen, when we actually started, uh, the redevelopment and the coalition for North Port St. Joe. Uh, this man has been there and he's done the work to show that we're trying to actually improve North Port St. Joe. And we've done this pretty much based upon the little inch money that we got from the city. So we have a master plan that's ready to go, but the one that oversees that, you know, we wouldn't want to change in the middle of the stream, someone that already knows the plan and how to implement that thing. And so that's why the application was put in. But I will get back with the city and find out what we need to do to send in another application of, of whatever sort needs to be done in order that we be able to obtain John Henry because he's been there. And he hasn't really been paid proper due from that, from the beginning. So he's done a lot of work just undercover. So we would like to keep, I, I think, uh, listen to, to Jim though, with this, anything over ten thousand dollars, we gotta, we gotta put out the bid. So, so I don't know how that's gonna come into play, but I'm just saying, that's, we, we can't just write a check for somebody that we liked him. No, we didn't, we didn't ask for that. We asked for, uh, that to be done based upon consultant and what he's doing for that community over there. Uh, and like I said, he's been there, his work has been a proven fact. We have not had a consultant for North Port St. Joe.
I'd like to say this too about, um, John, I think he does a big job at, um, helping out, um, the areas that, that, that he knows about. And I think, um, it's important that, that they, they keep a guy that's familiar with them, that's been working, um, with them for all these years, that's been in place. But they keep him on board and, um, we need to do whatever we can to try to help him out. We still have time to think about it and discuss it. Before, whatever, but I think we need to keep in mind that John has been there since, um, this, um, they had been initiated. And I think that we definitely keep in mind that, I think that all the harm that he has done, is just keep in mind that, uh, you've been working with him for a lot before we tried to decide to do anything, get an action.
Yeah, I don't, I disagree. I think we need to continue moving forward. It, it overlays the issue that we need to get rolling on, let's, let's keep moving forward.
And we have, we have asked our planner to give us a, uh, softball, that would be the next step that definitely we need to consider here, city level, to figure out whether we take anything, like if you're coming to begin that.
Like, like, um, Mel said, we want to give you, um, money from, uh, until January, you know, we were expecting it in October, by budget, but, I mean, we gotta consider that too. But definitely we need to keep in mind that John has been doing a good job and we can move forward with him.
All right, any other citizens out there?
Okay, I am Spike Comesker, the office of Commissioner Powell. I'm good. All right. Um, Washington, Washington High Gym, uh, tennis courts. What do you want to decide what we're gonna do about that?
Well, I don't, I don't think we've really made a final decision on that. I did have a conversation with a tennis court contractor to come in and look at, uh, giving us an estimate on paint park and, and two courts at, uh, at the soccer complex. Uh, so I'll certainly take him out to Washington Gym and have him give us an overview of, of those courts.
Um, let, let me know, uh, Mike, what, what the estimate is because I was thinking that maybe we can do something else with it, but if it's, if it's cheaper to, to, to court, then at this time when we definitely need the money to go back with the court. But I did have something else in mind and I just discussed it with you later.
Yeah, I, I think when I've talked to them over the phone and I've explained the damage to that court, most everyone says it's a tear out and a rebuild because of the size of those cracks on that court. So I think it's gonna be either a brand new court or remove it and, and just decide what to do with the space. I think it's probably gonna be our options.
Yeah, with that space, coming from a nice amount of, I, you know, right now, you know, we're higher and better use of it than, than tennis court because it wasn't used that much before, I don't think. It wasn't, you know, and so if we got a better idea of put something there that people utilize, I'm all behind that.
Absolutely. I think that's what I, I, I really did together with, talking about it, I think that would be good.
Okay.
Um, and, um, it's one more thing. I was thinking about the championship side, our championship that we wanted for St. Joe. We have them on the side of the road coming in, but, um, I think it'd be good to, to shadow.
Kind of come up with something that'll, you know, could we approve to sign the DAR, just welcome for St. Joe, smaller. That other thing was so big and hard to maintain, but, but I would be opposed to, to something, uh, that we recognize our past champions or college championship city or whatever. And then put the years we won state or something, that's, let's come up with something. I think John and I are working on that for storm, where we gotta move on. All right, we're done, sir. Anything? There's nothing else?
I've got a couple items. The first one is, I, I received a call and somebody who may as well from a gentleman on Garrison Avenue uh, that would like to rebuild a cover for where he parks his vehicles. And I, I misspoke, uh, misspoke by telling him that, you know, well, I think we have a process because we voted on it post hurricane that would allow them to rebuild a simple structure in the same spot that the old one was prior to the hurricane. Well, then I talked to Jim about it and found out, well, that was only a six month window. And, and I think our time, you know, act, if we go back in time, our. And I think our time, you know, if we go back in time, our trend thought was, well, in six months, everybody will have their carport rebuilt. And that's just not the case. We still have a lot of people that haven't even started on their home, mainly with insurance disputes. But I, I think we need to discuss and talk about the possibility of fast-tracking some of these very small carport structures, covering, awning, whatever you want to call them, when they can prove to the city and the building department that all they're doing is rebuilding exactly what was there. And that's pretty simple now with GeoMap and Google Earth. You can go back in time and see where it was, you can look at. I think we need to have a system that would allow the homeowner to fill out an application, work with the building department, pay a small fee, but it would circumvent going through what's required as if it was a new structure being built. You'd go, have to go before the planning board, you have to put it in the newspaper, you have to file for an exception and all those things. I think that's way too much trouble for a person that's just trying to put up a homing in the same spot that it was prior to the hurricane. And it sounds like we don't really have that possibility. So I would like to at least start thinking, maybe at our next meeting, have some kind of guidance to staff that would maybe allow them. I know we have some kind of ability to have a smaller group of people look at plans. I don't know if it would reach that level, but I wanted to mention that and see if we can get some kind of discussion going for the future of helping these people get the permit that they need without the red tape. The other item that I had was I wanted to get an update on what was the response from the county? We were going to reach out to the county and talk about these ditches that were going to be cleaned up and they had a grant that we were coming in the county.
Yeah, that, that was related to the NRCS grant and it's still not clear to me what their grant is applied for and ours, if, if there's any overlap. So that's a failure on mine to follow up with them and see if I can have something, an answer for you in the next one.
I understand what they already got. They, Commissioner Lowry, I think last week brought up.
I spoke to Sandy. Yeah. We had, he, he put some ditches on our, on their list that are in the city. No, I'd ask you to give more.
Yeah, it seemed like we, if the grants had processed this.
They haven't got.
I don't think so either. I don't think, I don't expect it at this point. We're, they're still going.
It was in the paper that they've gotten ten dollars for that. Yeah, but two months ago.
I just want to make sure we can stay on top of that because we've got a lot of ditches in the city that need to be put down.
Yeah, true. But Sandy wanted to make sure I told you that. Give them more and you can, he'll tell you what's on the list that's in the city.
The last thing I have, Mr. Mary, is I, I wanted a brief update as far as the grant writers we hired. We reached out and looked at application, we picked one or two. Have, have those grant writers that we are working with now, have they supplied the city any grants? Or are they working on any grants at this time?
Yes, there are a couple of, a couple of really big ones that are going to be working on for us. The Long Avenue project, we tasked him on there to try to figure out exactly how we're going to take on it. We actually reached back out to DEP and came back to us with some suggestions on there. So we're working that through DEP now, we're back to the Long Avenue project going with the rehab. The other big one he's working on, the CDBDR, he's been trying to follow, this is a very lengthy process. The state has submitted their plan back to the federal government, back to HUD for approval, to my understanding. But right now we're trying to follow through DC to see if HUD has approved the plan. When the plan comes out, then we'll have a clearer, a clearer understanding of what we can actually apply for. And that's going to be the big one. At this point, it's not clear it's exactly what we can apply for, whether it would be for, let's say, a complex or for water, sewer, or for some other type of economic development. But main focal point at this point has been for rehab of housing after the storm. Well, we've got several challenges because if you look at Port Saint Joe as to where the damages are, you have to look at LMI, it's load and modern income, okay? A good portion of town that was actually flooded after Hurricane Michael, the incomes are generally higher. Look at the areas that, that did not have flooding but had wind damage on there or just reconstruction work on there. You've got to go back through to make sure that they meet the LMI requirements on there. And then we're looking at two years in now. So the people that had damage to their houses, a lot of folks, you know, they want to maintain their house. They need to do something to their house. So the system very, very convoluted is how it's going to work and who's truly going to get it first. So there's a lot of question marks that he's trying to answer back from HUD, ask exactly who are qualified because there's going to be a mixture of rehab versus reconstruction. And that's the main focal point that's come down so far that we've heard, I believe it was sixty percent of the money is going for rehab of load and modern income.
Well, is the city capable of, and this grant writing stuff is all new to me. So I'm glad to hear that they're working on these big grants, big money grants. But can we look through the list of possible grants that are offered? And let's say the city was interested in the bike path grant, there's lots and lots of them. Can we instruct our grant writers to apply for a particular grant? Or do they just sit there and pick and choose which grants they would be interested in?
No, we can definitely take it. There's thousands of grants out there, you're exactly right. But there's ones that we call kind of our bread and butter brands. So we know that looking back through the, through the years, if they're truly qualified for, we can get. And what we're running to the last couple of years too, a lot of these have not been funded, like the, the third app. That used to be, boy, that was a staple for the city for years and years. That grant has actually kind of went away. So we've been very successful with the Scott Grant for our road payment, a lot of money. We've been very successful with the CDBGs. But the thing about it is you can only keep one note at a time. Like right now, we're still in the process and we can't get another one going until that one's completed. So we know which ones are staple, but yes, sir, look for them there. If you got specific ones you think were qualified for, we'd be more happy to get into them. Also too, I do have a, what I call a cheat sheet as far as what our grants are going to apply for and our status on there. I'll put one of them in the box, just kind of show you where we're at for the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you. So Ferguson Group, I believe is the name of that group that we hired for. Well, a thousand dollars was first.
Yes, sir, the focal point that we paid them for, I don't think we, I don't know if we've paid them yet. We've had a couple of. We've paid them, but I don't have to do that. But the focal point we had on the topic was water and sewer, storm for Long Avenue. They kind of helped the guys to land, number two was the CDBGs to give us a real map. They do send us stuff daily. They've flooded me and Michelle stuff daily. But the thing about it is, we've had a, I guess we're starting getting to the seniors now in, in our field and we've seen which ones qualify for it.
Mr. Hoffman, everything that comes across, I think they must send to us because it's rare that a day ago just to buy that we don't have something from them with some, you know, this is an option, what? And then Mr. Jim will take it and look at it. And if you see the roadblocks before you ever get started, you know, we need to look somewhere else. But they are very good to keep us surprised what's available and what they're doing.
It's not only a day goodbye, we don't see somebody sending something by the grain. In the year we tried to give it to for meeting these grants that we know, but we see where the roadblock goes.
Thank you.
All right, we're not sure. Okay, Avenue there and Battle Street, right there, you talked about Chicken House branch a while ago. We haven't got a chance to, I've had a couple of calls about overgrowth there. There's, there's some issues with traffic or something, John.
Well, there's some ditches there inside the fence.
Yeah. Okay, very good, thank you, sir. And also I had a, I had a call from the same gentleman that called Commissioner Hoffman. And I tried it the way I could, working with Jim to see. I was to help the man and he just bowled down and he had two choices, you know, spend three hundred dollars for a special exception or wait three months for us to change the ordinance. And so, so he, I mean, that was, I hated it, that was the only choice is that, of course, I had changed in three hundred, but looking back, the same footprint, the same thing, I wish we could figure out a way to make it work. It wasn't up like a can of worms because my next thing is a can of worms. An individual called me and, and it's with a lady that wants her son to be able to move a trailer in next to her house and live, live next to her. Five days a week to look after her and I told her I'd bring it up for discussion, but also told her that, you know, it probably would up a can of worms because we don't, I don't think the city wants to become a trailer community and, you know, but I told her I'd bring it up. So we can think about it, talk about it, what, think about it when you, after the meeting, what you think, you know, be fair, there's always going to be those special exceptions that we'd like to help, but we can't. So it's not always good, but you got to learn some what, of control of the beauty of our city. So anyway, I brought it up, you guys can chew on and think about, you know, if you want to make a change, we'll, we'll look at it. And that's all I have, so I'll entertain the most to a journey. All right, your turn, thank you all for coming.